Okay. I hereby call the Des Moines Regular City Council meeting for March 9th to order, and I will have Deputy Mayor Buxton do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Buxton. Let the record reflect that six council members are present. Councilmember Nutting had notified me in advance that he would not be able to attend the meeting. Do I have a motion to excuse?
Second.
Do I have a second?
I have a question. Did the council member provide an explanation for his absence?
He did. It was, I received a notice several weeks ago.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor? Motion passed six zero. All right, we're gonna, council, presiding officer's privilege here, we're gonna change things up in respect to a couple of our visitors. First of all, I'd like to recognize Commodore Ivana Halverson. She is the Commodore for the Des Moines Yacht Club. And go ahead to the podium. She also provided us these little origami things and an invitation to opening day of boating season.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and city manager for having me tonight. My name is Ivana Halverson, and I am the 2023 Commodore of Des Moines Yacht Club. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight and update you on our club's 2023 activities and public events. Des Moines Yacht Club, as you know, was founded in 1957 as the Vagabond Outdoor Motor Boat Club, and our clubhouse and facility still reside on our original property. Our principal goals are to intertwine beginning members with seasoned mariners, promote camaraderie, share boating experiences, provide a family-safe environment, respect and encourage all levels of boaters, and enjoy exploring the Puget Sound. We are pleased to continue on with the following public activities this our 66th year. Saturday, March 18th, coming up very soon, is our annual marine swap meet from 9:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., and that is open to the public. For the past 24 years, Des Moines Yacht Club has sponsored and held a marine swap meet that attracts 40 to 50 vendors and up to 500 or more potential buyers to our facility. This event creates an opportunity for boaters to sell their surplus items and find great deals or rare equipment for their boating enjoyment. Proceeds from the swap meet go to the Des Moines First Mates Group, who generously donate every year to a variety of local charities, including but not limited to Des Moines Food Bank, Des Moines Senior Center, Mount Rainier Pool, Des Moines Legacy Foundation, Pediatric Inarm Care Center, and many others over the years. April 16th, DMYC will head south to attend the Tacoma Yacht Club Daffodil Marine Festival and Parade. We have attended this event for many years with a parade boat decorated with hundreds of daffodils, in keeping with the event's annual theme. Our parade boat always does a great job of representing not only our yacht club, but the Des Moines community. We also intend to attend the Seattle Opening Boating Marine Parade the first weekend of May. On Wednesday, May 10th, the Yacht Club will host the annual scholarship reception for Des Moines Dollars for Scholars. This is another public event that's open to all of the public. DMYC has participated in the Des Moines Dollars for Scholars Scholarship Program by dispersing First Mates Navigating the Future scholarships annually that are supported by various fundraising efforts throughout the year. From 2008 to 2022, DMYC First Mates Navigating the Future has funded $41,500 in scholarships to 46 amazing Mount Rainier High School seniors. This year, the First Mates will award three more scholarships. Saturday, May 13th, is our South Sound Opening Day for Boating Activities and Ceremony. We look forward to a busy weekend on the waterfront this year with some city events happening at the Marina that will dovetail perfectly with our boating celebration. It will be a great weekend in Des Moines. DMYC has several Saturday morning and afternoon activities that are intended to provide our guests and visiting yacht club boaters an introduction to downtown Des Moines to select a lunch spot and plan their future visits to our fair city. Our objective is to demonstrate that Des Moines is a great boating destination. We are working closely with the Marina staff to pack the public basin from Friday to Sunday with as many visiting yacht club boats as they can accommodate. The Saturday afternoon ceremony begins at 3:00 p.m. and again is open to the public, and all are welcome. I have provided the clerk with our formal invitation to the mayor, council, city manager, and staff for this event. We are planning the usual fanfare that begins with bagpipes, followed by a flag ceremony, and closes with a blessing of the fleet. We finish up Saturday with a Members-and-Guests-Only Dinner and Dance at the Yacht Club, and this year we will be rocking to the eighties with the Interactive Party Band. We're very excited about the whole weekend, and I'll be back in April to coordinate the city proclamation for the South Sound Opening event, and as always, we look forward to your participation. For the July 4th holiday, we look forward to experiencing this year's celebration over the water from our beautiful clubhouse and grounds. Our members often have an impromptu gathering and potluck to observe and enjoy the evening For the Waterland Festival, DMYC again plans to participate in the parade and other activities. In 2022, several of our members cooperated with the Legacy Foundation to build more than 70 wooden hydroplanes that were handed out to kids and were a big hit at the Waterland Kids Arts Festival. We hope to repeat that again this year, it was so much fun. In July and August, we, along with everyone else, will be enjoying the Saturday farmer's market, concert in the park, and other city activities. I will come back later in the year to update you on our fall and winter events. Des Moines Yacht Club is very proud to be a contributing part of this community. We promote our city wherever we go, and we are proud to call Des Moines our home port. Let me close by saying we appreciate your efforts in leading the city and the emphasis you are implying to improving the Marina and downtown. Thank you for the opportunity to provide our spring Des Moines Yacht Club update, and I'll be back before you know. Thanks.
Thank you so much. All right, council, again, I'm gonna take Presiding Officer's report, our privilege, and I'm gonna pull item seven in advance of public comment. Do I have a motion for that? Councilmember Pennington?
Move to approve the North Bulkhead Proclamation, recognition of federal, state, and elected officials.
Okay. Thank you very much, I have a second. Councilmember Stein must have seconded. One of the things that I'm extremely proud about in our particular city is how we address the sound. We wholeheartedly are partners. A lot of people talk about improving the environment and so forth, but Des Moines has been one of those cities that has definitely stepped up and walked the talk. We have SR3 in our city, we have Trout Unlimited, we have the Mass Center, we have offered some great diving and so forth, and we're spending a lot of energy restoring our fishing, fishery and streams. But one of the things is the North Marina Bulkhead has been an important project, and I wanted to turn it over to Michael for a couple of comments before I take a vote, and we have discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Just to emphasize, you know, accomplishment of the renovation of the Bulkhead was a $12 million project that took probably three years longer than it should have based on the complexity of dealing with federal permitting for that project. We were happy that it was completed, we did an opening. That opening unfortunately coincided with the legislative session down in Olympia, and we were not able to acknowledge the role that our legislators have played in this process, and it's a profound role, and I'm gonna give you a few examples. We met at one point, Congressman Adam Smith came out and gave us advice and assistance in how to navigate federal permitting, and that was extremely helpful in the end getting that permit. Also, in terms of capital support, money, we received support from both Senator Karen Kaiser on the Senate side and Representative Tina Orwell and Representative Mia Gregerson on the House side in the 33rd District, and they helped provide funds for the Bulkhead to be completed. We did about, it was, as I said, $12 million. We were able to combine two phases, which saved the city about $3 million, and the reason we were able to do that was because we're solvent, we had cash available, we had a three-step upgrade in our bond rating, which I've talked about before, which cut the cost of the bonds by over half a million dollars, and all those different pieces, along with legislative support, resulted in us being able to do the Bulkhead all at once, save the city money, and now we have this great facility that's functional. And in regard to the legislators, as this proclamation identifies their help, they also help us with issues at Redondo, they help us with issues related to public safety, they help us with issues related to, or try to help us with issues related to affordable housing, homelessness, and just the general well-being of our city. And so for that, we're extremely grateful, we have great working relationships with both our legislators and our staff, we've got great representation in Olympia, Mr. Hemstad, who's our legislative advocate. So Mayor, thank you, but I just want to acknowledge what a functional and ongoing relationship, and working relationship we have with our elected officials.
Also, I'd like to add that, you know, we had a ribbon cutting not too long ago, and I know that some people didn't get the invite, or it was a little late for them. I wanted everybody to know, we're working on another date, most likely it'll be May 13th as well, in the morning, to combine with the others, and this would allow us to invite our legislators to attend as well. So I'm in discussions with a couple people in the community, and I'll keep, I'll report back to council. With that, do I have any discussion on the proclamation? Seeing none? All those in favor, raise your hand. All six of us have voted for the proclamation, and now I will read it. Whereas, the North Marina Bulkhead was originally constructed in 1979 and consisted of timber leggings supported by timber pilings anchored to the shore and fronted by rock slope for wave and tide protection. And whereas, after decades of heavy use and impacts from Puget Sound, the existing Bulkhead experienced significant structural failures necessitating immediate need for replacement. And whereas, the North Marina Bulkhead is a regional facility with many users residing outside the city of Des Moines, and whereas, the high cost to rebuild the North Bulkhead was beyond the city of Des Moines' limited resources. And whereas, regional partnerships were necessary to move this complex and expensive project forward. And whereas, the recently completed new North Marina Bulkhead implements features to accommodate water, land, air emergency management activity. Now for, the Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims and recognizes Congressman Adam Smith and his staff for helping obtain the federal permits to allow this project to proceed. Senator Karen Kaiser for outstanding leadership in the State Senate for obtaining $4 million in construction funds in the state capital budget. Also Representatives Tina Orwell and Mia Gregerson for their leadership in the House of Representatives in securing those capital budget allocations. The North Bulkhead could not have been rebuilt without the partnership and leadership of our federal and state elected officials and representatives. The city of Des Moines recognizes and thanks our partners in making this project a success. Signed this ninth day of March, Mayor Matt Mahoney. And that's worthy of applause, folks. It's hard to get something done on the water. Thank you, and I appreciate the council's leeway here. With that, we're gonna move on to public comment. First, are there any correspondence?
There are no other correspondence outside the emails already received by council, and I'll put those in the packet tomorrow morning.
Okay, great. Is it now time for the comment from the public? I would like to just remind those participants that any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting. You have three minutes to speak, and we will start with Ms. Melanie Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Melanie Barlow from the Redondo Beach community. First, I would like to thank everyone for your time and efforts put forth to meet with the Redondo community members and your continued support to help increase safety by getting the ticketing flock cameras installed at Redondo. Your time and attention towards these efforts is appreciated greatly, thank you very much. My number one concern, and will continue to be my number one concern for the Redondo Beach community, is safety, and I continue to be concerned about the gun-related issues in our neighborhood. While I agree that gun-related incidents are occurring and increasing everywhere, and it's a problem for the greater Redondo and Des Moines areas, in David Emery's review that he submitted recapping the past five months of data from the Des Moines Police Blotter, revealed that on a per capita basis, the rate of illegal gunshots and actual gun shootings is 2.5 to three times higher in the Redondo neighborhood as compared to the rest of Des Moines. That brings me back again to my comments in the past where our beach community is such a small community, so to have that big of a difference, to me, is critical. Because of these findings, I would again ask that the Des Moines Police Department not wait to increase patrols at Redondo Beach, we need some increased presence now. There was another incident last night at the Mass Center at about 10:45 p.m. I don't know what the issue was, but in the end, two cars were towed away from the location, and it may not have been gun-related, it's just like every week, there is something or multiple things happening just right down at the beach. I know that we would all love to see more people coming to our area, enjoying our area, enjoying our businesses. Those people have to feel safe, those people have to get the word that those communities and those places to visit are safe places to bring their families, especially if they're outside of our area. So I really feel like it's just not to benefit the people in our community, it's to benefit the whole Des Moines and Redondo Beach areas. They are destined, they could be destination places for a lot of people and bring a lot of business, but those people have to feel safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Barlow. Moving on to Mr. Bill Lynn Scott.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, city manager, everybody else who's joined tonight, I wanted to cover a couple of topics. The first is the re-establishment of the Citizen Advisory Board. I couldn't be more pleased, I think this is great news, and I've probably badgered several of you on this topic over the years. So it's, I think it establishes, you know, a structured network for communications between the city and the neighborhoods, and those that I know in the neighborhoods are excited about this. It ties in, of course, with what the council's doing itself regarding improving communications and the public being a stakeholder in that. I think, so with the neighborhoods, it's important for them to step forward too and get their representatives sorted out, and I was involved in the Advisory Board back in 2016 and 17, and you know, that was a bit of a challenge, and I think we've got a small city, there's no reason we shouldn't have a great communication network in it. The second item I wanted to cover, I actually saw in the February Community Police Report, which I think is a great report, it comes out monthly, and it's very informational. But it dealt with their focus on code enforcement in the downtown corridor, which I think is great, because we've got a lot of vacant lots down there that needed a little attention and a bit of cleanup, and maybe it'll cost them a little bit of money, which might cause them to think it's time to develop this thing, or move it on to somebody that will develop it. And along those lines, you know, it seems like we've been battling that property down there for some time, you know, maybe we could come up with an ordinance or something for prolonged vacant lots, where at a point in time, there's a fee that you might apply to those until, you know, they either start their development activity or move it on to somebody who will. Those are my thoughts. Thanks for the comment.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn Scott. I have Mr. Lloyd Little signed up, but I'm gonna hold his comment till the appropriate time later in the meeting, so we'll move on to Ms. Cavon.
Good evening. Cavon from Redondo Beach, thank you for listening to us as a resident here. I wanna follow up on the flower plant that a couple of, a few, a few of our residents have brought up for the location on Redondo Beach Drives between 280th and 281st. I understand that we're, you know, the city's trying to do the repair to the, to the pier, to the, you know, moving the restroom, doing the parking, totally understand that, but we constantly, daily, having people park in that area and hanging out, doing whatever they're doing. My neighbor that lives right across, right from it, one day, not till, last week, the person pulled out their private parts and went to the bathroom. Luckily, her five-year-old wasn't there to see all that. If we put the planter there, that will deter them to park on one side towards, you know, the side towards the water, or both sides. Literally, they blocked off that street, it's a one-way street. So I, we would really appreciate it if you can consider putting that in, and that will deter people from parking there, using the restroom, making that place as their restroom, they dump out their garbage in there. My neighbor that lives on that condo, she constantly, every day she goes out there and clean up that area. So we really believe that putting the planter there, that will deter people from parking there. And I want to echo Melanie on, we're making the area safe, welcoming, and that will bring family that will come down and enjoy, and not having to worry about the other activity, that bad activity that's coming down there. The more of the families that we have down there, the children, the family, the good people that comes down and hang out, there would be less of the bad people that will come down. Some people call them thugs, I don't, they're just bad people, period, and it has nothing else better to do than just come hang out down there and just make it bad for all of us. That is it, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Van. All right, moving on to the city manager's report, again, we're gonna do something a little different. Michael and I have asked Deputy Mayor Buxton to introduce our skip partner, as she has been the key liaison from the council, and for that, I turn the floor over to you, Tracy.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight is a great opportunity to celebrate, we, this is celebrating our first capital allocation from this partnership to two projects that we're gonna be briefed on tonight. So just as a little refresher, in 2019, the legislature passed a House Bill 1406, which allowed, allowed cities to take an opportunity to contribute in their own cities to housing issues, housing and homelessness issues, and so in South County, 11, well, 10 cities and King County partnered together through an ILA, and so that we can pool our funds to work this issue, and so for Des Moines, we participate by forwarding $30,000 a year into this partnership. So tonight, we're gonna be briefed about this by our skip executive manager, Claire Goodwin, and she's, a little bit about her, she's brand new to this position and doing a fantastic job. I'm really excited to have her, she's only been here for seven weeks. She's originally from Tacoma, was deeply involved in policy development and administration there, and served two sessions in Olympia as a fiscal analyst for the state budget. So we are extremely fortunate to have her as our director there for this partnership, and I'm gonna turn it over to her to brief us on this exciting event. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. I am so happy to be here. My name is Claire Goodwin, and I am the new executive manager for the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, or Skip is what we call ourselves for short. So this is my first time before your council, so thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. So Skip was formed in 2019 through an interlocal agreement, as Deputy Mayor outlined, between several city governments in King County to address the housing needs of South King County as a unified, coordinated coalition, and Des Moines was a founding member. Skip currently has 11-member jurisdictions, which are listed on the slide. Des Moines is represented by Deputy Mayor Buxton on the Skip Executive Board. And by way of background, on Skip's Housing Capital Fund, in 2019, substitute House Bill 1406 became law allowing cities and counties to recapture a portion of Washington State sales tax when it's used to support affordable housing initiatives. You may recall that the effective sales tax rate didn't change for the consumer, and instead, the tax gets credited against the state sales tax. In 2021, city council authorized an interlocal agreement with Skip, which allowed the pooling of sales tax receipts received under substitute House Bill 1406 from each participating member jurisdiction for use by Skip in funding affordable housing projects. This is the first of an annual process with Skip and member jurisdictions to fund projects with these pooled resources through the Skip Housing Capital Fund. Use of these pooled funds requires approval from each participating city council, even though you each participating city council. Even though you have already contributed these funds to skip, your council will need to take action for us to use the funds. So this approach allows multiple cities to pool their funds for projects across South King County to maximize the creation of affordable housing overall and in each city. So skip opened its first housing capital fund application in 2022. Three projects applied for skip funding, and they all happened to be projects in Burien. The skip advisory board reviewed applications and forwarded its funding recommendations to the skip executive board that reflected the policies and priorities adopted by the board. After careful deliberation, the skip executive board concurred with the recommendations of the skip advisory board and has recommended total funding of $1,393,008 for two projects, as described in the skip executive board funding recommendation memo dated December 16, 2022, which I believe was included in your packet. So the projects under consideration and the skip executive board's recommended funding levels for each project are listed on the slide, and I'll briefly go through each one. So first, we have a Habitat for Humanity homeownership project in Burien. A phase one of this project includes the construction of 23-bedroom townhomes for households earning up to 50% of the area median income, or AMI. And for awareness, earlier this afternoon, we did hear from Habitat for Humanity on this project, and they are revising their population to be served to be an average of 50% AMI. But this would not be above 60% AMI for households in this project. So just for your awareness on the latest on that. So the requested funding from skip is $300,000, and the same amount was recommended by the board. The special conditions include this being a secured grant with no repayment, as long as affordability and target population are maintained, and the covenant is recorded to ensure affordability for at least 50 years. Second is a project from Mercy Housing Northwest, which is an 89-unit multifamily mixed-income affordable rental housing development. The project proposal is to provide a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments for households with mixed incomes from 0% to 30%, 30% to 50%, and up to 60% AMI, and anticipated set-asides at 20% for households with a disability, and a 40% set-aside for households experiencing homelessness. The requested funding from skip is $1,938,008, and the same amount was recommended by the board. Special conditions include being a deferred contingent forgivable loan, and the covenant is recorded to ensure affordability for at least 50 years. Ego Thrive also submitted an application for a homeownership project, which includes new construction of 26 houses for households earning 30% to 50% AMI. The requested funding from skip was between $700,000 and $1,000,000, and the board did not recommend funding at this time. Both the advisory board and executive board are enthusiastic about this project, but the element of readiness to use the funds and complement other fund sources informed this recommendation. And the project sponsors have been encouraged to apply during this next round of funding, which will happen later this year. And finally, this slide shows a total amounts contributed by jurisdiction to the skip housing capital fund, and of this total, the amounts by jurisdiction for each project. You will also see the unallocated amounts by jurisdiction to be used in future funding years, and that's the far right column. So we are seeking authorization from your city council to allocate the two amounts listed for both of these projects under your city in alignment with the executive board's recommendation. This is $10,726.71 for the Habitat for Humanity project, and $39,091.99 for the Mercy Housing project. And in conclusion, we are looking for your support to authorize the allocation of $49,818.70 from the city's contribution to the skip housing capital fund to finance the two affordable housing projects we talked about today per our interlocal agreement requirements. And with that, I am happy to take any questions you may have.
Before we take questions, I'm going to turn over to the Florida city manager.
Yeah. Thank you, Claire. It's great to see the implementation of what was a lot of work envisioning, and I know Nancy's efforts, kind of originating a lot of that and calling meetings together years ago to try to get from A to B on this. And there are just two points, I think, that are really important. First of all, I think the city of Des Moines was grateful to be able to participate in a regional effort. And we think that the solution has to be regional. It can't be city-specific. The resources just aren't there. But a collective approach, perhaps, could help kind of, you know, turn the tide. And the other point you made, which is in the presentation, is that there were no new taxes established to fund skip. There was a redirection of existing resources. So the citizens of this city and other cities and so forth were not taxed to provide the resources you have to work with, but there were the redirection from sales tax and some other, I think, pretty primarily sales tax. So with that, thank you, Mayor. I just want to make both of those points, I think, are germane to us. So, thank you.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Harris, and then I see Councilmember Steinmetz.
Thank you. And thank you very much. So the same question I have every year, or one and a half questions. When is, there's an inventory of existing stock that's coming? An ETA on that, perhaps?
Yeah. So the executive board received an update in, I want to say, January at their meeting, and we are on track for having that inventory for, for, I would say, internal consumption. The deadline is June, and we'll likely get it sooner than that.
Is there anything precluding obtaining funds to upgrade existing stock?
For the housing capital fund? So the, the board adopts guidelines every year to show what the funding would support. And because the funding is originating from substitute House Bill 1406, we're also under the guidelines or the rules and the laws provided in state statute. So I would need to review that in depth, but it is acquisition.
I'm not trying to blindside you. I'll just, cards on the table. It would be my, personally, my profoundest wish that there could be programs that would help existing buildings to be upgraded, to become more desirable, and so on. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
Hi. This is great, what you're doing, and the fact that you're going through and you're looking at what are the projects that are ready to go right now, and spending that money wisely. So let me give you lots of compliments for doing that, and just, I know that's hard work to do. There were only three applicants for the funds, apparently, and none of them appear to be transitional housing. Is that, is traditional, transitional housing not normally included? How does it fit in the bigger picture? Because a lot of times for people without a home, they need a transitional place before they can get into a long-term housing situation.
So I would say that, so first of all, this was our first year running this, pooling these resources and putting the, putting the request out for applications. So that's why we only had probably three, but also the level of readiness for the projects. And Burien is engaged in an affordable housing demonstration program, which was desirable to the developers that applied for this program. In terms of transitional housing, I think, I think the projects that could be funded from this funding, that there is an opportunity to fund that, that lower-income band that could potentially serve, I would say, the same needs that someone looking for transitional housing would want, right? An affordable, permanent, stable, safe housing situation. And so I don't know that it's necessarily part of what the board would prioritize and what the allowed usage for the funds would entail. But I would say that it's, it's really serving the needs of, of the folks that are at that, you know, the, the lower-income brackets. So I think it gets to the same goal that you're, you're talking about.
Okay. And one more question for me. The King County Regional Health, Regional Homelessness Authority, I think it is, is kind of looming out there, and they're developing a five-year plan. What is the, the interaction, if any? And if, this may be something that you're not, having been on the job a short while, you're still digesting a lot of information. So if you're, if you're, if you can tell us about that, great. If it's still a pretty new subject to you, I certainly understand why. But what's the interaction between skip and the King County Regional Homelessness Authority?
So in my, in my seven weeks, it's, it's my understanding, we are, we are completely, we are separate entities, and I would consider them a potential stakeholder, just as I would consider other organizations a stakeholder in this work. But they don't have, you know, influence, I would say, in, in our work necessarily. And we have two very different objectives and missions. And I'm, I'm sure there's alignment in, in some of the work. But yeah, you can, you can, I can safely say that we are, we are separate, separate organizations.
I just, I know there were some doubters, thought this would be a bureaucracy board, and nothing would get done. But it appears you're building buildings, and I'm impressed. Thank you. Oh, Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Just a question. So are we going to be seeking a motion, or are we going to keep this with consent?
No. This is going to be staying with the consent agenda. It just happened to be one of the things the city manager had on his report.
Thank you. Could I make one?
You sure can.
So I did, I did want to clarify something I heard in terms of the funding that Des Moines provides. And so tonight, we're talking about the housing capital fund, and that is all funded through the substitute House Bill 1406 funding. But Des Moines does contribute financially to our operating budget. So I just wanted to, and it's different sources of revenues. I just wanted to, to make sure for the record, we're clear.
Thank you.
I think we can be assured with Deputy Mayor involved, that's going to be transparency on the finance. Is that, is that true?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Move on. Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items tonight. One, we will be bringing more back to the council in this regard, but it's our intention this year, for the Fourth of July, to try something innovative. The city will be responsible for, for the Fourth of July fireworks event, but it's not going to be fireworks. It's going to be drones, possibly lasers, possibly music. So we're working on that right now. But we're going to more of a sort of non-fireworks display, and to see how well that's received by our community. And hopefully, it will be well received. But we'll have more for you on that, but that's what's coming down the road. Two other things I want to mention. So the legislature right now in Olympia is wrestling with some very complicated items. And one of them is to try and, what's the best way to say this? It has to do with trying to allow our police to operate without constraints, or with less constraints relative to pursuit issues. And so there's Bill 1363, and this is an interesting bill. It was in the Senate. It was being opposed by the Chair of the Senate Law and Justice Committee. The bill got pulled. It was taken directly to the Senate floor yesterday, and it was approved with some, I don't know, amendments that are probably not in favor of it being as effective as it could be. So right now, it will then be referred back to the House, which did not pass it. And it's extremely fluid situation relative to some reform of, of constraints on police action. It's something that the city and our elected leadership and our legislative advocate and all of us have supported to try and help have the pendulum swing back to a rational opportunity for the police to do their, to do their work. And it's very discouraging. Every night, I watch the news, and every night, there's examples where the hindrances to police action allow the bad guys to get away with stuff, or for there to be violence, or for there to be people that go unapprehended. So we can only hope for the best with this, but I wanted to brief the council. I know a number of council members have been involved in supporting this. Secondly, I wanted to just talk briefly about House Bill 1110. And that has to do with housing and enhancing the capacity for there to be multifamily units, some addressing of both housing needs but also affordable housing. And the problem with this at the moment, from our view, is that it usurps local control over zoning and decisions relative to housing stock. And so for that reason, the bill is, it's alive in the legislature, at least halfway point. It passed 7521 in the House. Now it's going to the Senate. I don't believe there's a Senate bill, so they would have to introduce a bill similar to the House bill or identical. Otherwise, if they pass their own bill, they'll end up in a conference committee trying to establish what the, what the, you know, the mutual rules of the road will be, and then take it back to the floor, to the floor of both houses for a vote. It's very complicated. I think that we stand on the idea that we are, that local government is entitled to local control of our zoning and of our, the development of our cities. And I think it's coincidental that you're here tonight, and we're talking about affordable housing and ways that we can participate regionally. And that was done by cities who chose to do that. Individuals, smaller entities, who said, yes, we want to retain local control, but we want to do it in a manner of, of regional cooperation. So Councilmember Steinmetz had brought this up as well. And Councilmember, if you have any additional comments?
Thank you. The, this was addressed at the Sound Cities Association Public Interest Committee last night quite extensively. There is a Senate bill. It actually passed a while ago. They are no longer identical. The House bill changed quite a bit on the way out. The Senate bill did not change much from its original drafting, but it also passed the Senate 48, 41 to eight. So there seems to be a fair amount of support. The Sound, Washington Association of Cities has been working with the bill, the House bill, because there was just a lot more room to work on it in the House, and that is HB 1110. They call it the middle housing bill, and the idea is to allow the creation of multi-unit, four or six, or two-unit properties on a lot where there used to just be single-family homes. So your neighbor could decide to tear down and build a sixplex, for example. And that takes, you know, control away from your city council, from any of the local cities to determine what kind of neighborhood that's going to be. It really does change things. And there is no, here in Des Moines, we have a lot of different lot sizes within the same neighborhood. And yet, the way the bill is written, it affects lot sizes. So if you have a half-acre lot that's right next to a quarter-acre lot, it's the same amount of units that can be built on either of those two lots, which makes almost no sense. But once one of those lots goes for sale, if a developer wants to buy it and put a six-unit on it, they can do that. And that will fundamentally change the character of a lot of our neighborhoods. And that will fundamentally change the character of a lot of our neighborhoods. So I would encourage everybody to contact their representatives, contact Karen Kaiser, contact Tina Orwell, and contact Mia Gregerson. Get yourself informed about this bill and let them know that certainly in a place like Des Moines where you have uneven lot sizes in the same neighborhood, it doesn't make sense to calculate it based upon lot size. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, for clarification and the information. Mayor, that concludes my report. Thank you, Michael. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, 2023 South King Housing and Homelessness Partners Housing Capital Fund recommendation. Item three, 216th Town Homes Modification Subdivision Final Plot. Item four, 2023 to 2024 Recycling Program Grant Funding. Item five, Rights of the Southern Resident Orca Proclamation. Item six, Collective Bargaining Agreement Teamsters Local Number 763. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? 移到 moved.
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Buxton. Is there anyone that wishes to pull an item? Councilmember Harris?
Yes, Mayor, item six.
Item six, okay.
Apologies, Mayor, item four. I'm sorry.
Item four, all right. So just item four, correct? Do I have you correct, you're pulling item four?
Yes.
So council will be voting in consent on items one, items two, three, five, and six. All those in favor? Passes six zero. And before we get to item four, Councilmember Harris, I have, I want to deal with the proclamation for the orca. And with that, I'm going to have Mr. Lloyd Little come up to the podium and why he's coming up. So one of the things, this is a proclamation we'll read as orca. As you have noticed, Casey at SR3 would be adamant to call it the killer whale. And I reached out, a lot of people don't know this, but I actually worked for the Swamish tribe and wholesale fireworks for years. So I have several members up there. And so I asked them the pronunciation, what would be for the south sound, Salish sea. And the word orca is kal kal ahik. And I'm not even going to try to spell it because it's got a lot of Qs and other symbols in it. But with that, when Mr. Lloyd Little had brought this to, before the council and requested we make it a proclamation, he'd also signed up to speak. And I had him move to this point so he could say the words which were more appropriate at this time. For that, I turn over the floor to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. Thank you, members of the council, everybody, Des Moines residents, city staff. I want to thank you for supporting Southern residents and helping heal our Salish Sea. And I have a statement from Raynell Morris, known as Squilla Helly, the Laktemish people. She's a matriarch and tribal member of Lemmy Nation. She would like to say, quote, "Hi, Shk, thank you. Declaring inherent rights for Quell Lo'ometchin, our relatives under the sea, is critical to heal and protect our whale relatives as it's our sacred obligation. We are guided by ancestors in our culture, and these proclamations bring all peoples together in this responsibility," unquote. I'd like to add a couple of words of my own on top of that. With this proclamation, Des Moines continues its leadership in helping in healing the Salish Sea. SR3 Response Rehab Research started and based in Des Moines, just rewilded the sea lion Sagittarius after a three-month-long rehabilitation and rescue. It gives this type of life-saving help to many marine mammals in the Salish Sea and does vital research for the Southern resident orcas. As far as I know, there is no other city or organization doing work like this in the entire Salish Sea. Des Moines continues to collaborate with First Nations, U.S., and B.C. peoples of the Salish Sea community toward common beneficial solutions and prosperity for human beings and non-human beings alike, as shown in this proclamation for our wonderful Southern resident orca neighbors' rights. Thank you, Mayor Mahoney, and members of the council, city staff and residents in Des Moines. May God bless Des Moines now and always.
Thank you. Mr. Little, if you'll just stay there because we have a few more things to do. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas Southern resident orcas, the orcas, are culturally, spiritually, and economically important to the people of Washington State and the world. And whereas, despite legal protections for nearly two decades, the population continues to decline and it is critically endangered with only 73 individuals left. Whereas the orca survival is dependent on healthy and functioning ecosystems. And whereas, over 20 countries, dozens of local communities in the United States, and several tribal governments have recognized that nature has inherent rights and that human society has the responsibility to protect and steward nature in a manner consistent with our interconnected relationships. And whereas, the rights of the Southern resident orcas include but are not limited to the right to life, autonomy, culture, free and safe passage, adequate food supply from naturally occurring sources, and freedom from conditions causing physical, emotional, or mental harm, including a habitat degraded by noise, pollution, and contamination. Now forth, the Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims and urges action by local, state, federal, and tribal governments that secure and effectuate the rights of the Southern resident orcas and of the ecosystem upon which they depend. Signed this ninth day of March, Mayor Matt Mahoney." And with that, if council would oblige, if the four of you guys will get together behind, he's got a lummy flag and we're going to take a picture and have the proclamation for him. Go ahead and get right back there and then come around. Yeah, Kayle do it. So come over here. Right? Did you guys get up? Yeah, they can help cover it up. All right, and then I'm handing you the proclamation.
Hold it, if you hold it out like this, you'll get a more awful picture.
Okay. All right. Sir, we also have a bid for you. Now we'll move on to item four. Councilmember Harris, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, you know, the boat has sailed, but in reviewing just the progress on the construction, I would hope that moving forward, I'm strongly in support of this project, but in future projects, it would be good if we could provide some path.
Councilmember Harris, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you for a second because I think you meant to pull item three, 216th, not the 2324 Recycling Grant Program.
I apologize. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, so just to correct the record, you're pulling item three. Now, city attorney, we just approved item four in the consent agenda?
Thank you, thank you. Chair of research.
Well, no, you already, item three's already been approved.
Yes.
He pulled item four, so that's where we're at.
So we're at item four. Councilmember Steinmetz.
My apologies.
We'll have a separate vote on item four later, but Mr. Harris could use his time to make the points that he wanted to make about item number three, even though we have already.
All right, I'll allow that. Go ahead, sir.
That would be fine.
Will we be voting on the Recycling Program grant funding?
Very good. My apologies, my vision failed me once again. The, it would be, I think it would be good in the future in our upcoming comp plan and so on, since these, I hope these projects become more common, that we could provide some improvement on landscaping requirements, especially around the boundaries with other neighborhoods. There doesn't seem to be a requirement for trees, and I think we should work on our tree cover. We've talked about that with the Port of Seattle Greener Cities Project. And it would make a much more accommodating process for the surrounding neighbors to know that they have that added privacy of appropriate tree cover. And that's it.
All right. So council will be voting on item four, which is the 2023 Recycling Program Grant Funding. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Pennington?
Second.
Do you want me to read the motion?
Please, if you would.
I move to accept the King County Solid Waste Division Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant and authorize the city manager to sign the grant document substantially in the form as attached.
Councilmember Steinmetz, can I second it? Any discussion before we take a vote on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes six zero. All right. Moving on to new business. This time is for the sole purpose of proposing new business items that have not previously been before the council for discussion on a future agenda. This is not a time for questions about old business. Councilmembers can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business to the city manager at any time. Do any councilmembers have new business that they would like to propose? Councilmember Oxger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The COVID pandemic has been a great distraction over the past three years, so much so that a serious report on the health impacts of Seattle International Airport air traffic on our city went pretty much unacknowledged. Public Health Seattle King County's 96-page study, Community Health and Airport Operations Related Noise and Air Pollutions, seems to have slipped through the cracks. The study's findings included that based upon proximity to the airport, lower life expectancy rates, higher rates of death overall, including higher rates of death from heart disease, chronic lower respiratory disease, diabetes, and chronic liver disease, higher hospitalization rates, and higher rates of premature births. And of equal concern, it shows that the 7,000 kids of Des Moines are testing approximately one full year behind their peers in other parts of the counties in their educational progress. The Public Health Report found a likely causal relationship between noise and air pollution and numerous adverse health outcomes. The Public Health Report concluded, among other things, prevention and mitigation of airport-related pollution exposures is critical for these communities, given the increased risk. I propose inviting the Public Health Seattle King County group in the near future to address a council member, a council meeting or study session to discuss the report and provide any additional impacts and updates in these ensuing two years since the report was initially issued. And I would say that the need for such a briefing is critical right now, considering the state's progress in extending SR 509 and the potential for more significant air traffic and logically a greater impact on the communities surrounding the airport.
You know, obviously, I would support that, too. I don't, I see a third there. You know, it might not be the next couple of months, but it might be within the next four to six is probably a safe assessment. But yeah, we'll move that forward to staff. Michael, did you have something?
Yeah, I think that's fine. Councilmember, if you would send me the citation for that, do you have it?
The citation.
For the report. You have it? Okay, thank you. That makes it easy. The other thing is that what will be critical in all of this relative to impacts from the airport will be our response to the Sustainable Airport Master Plan environmental documents as they are published. So if this is something that we can include as part of our commentary or, you know, in whatever direction we go to advise the airport of our concerns about environmental impacts, I think it's a great step in the right direction.
Well, I would add that there, the airport, the port has hired a consultant, Rambo, to generate findings and recommendations with regard to this study and a lawsuit specifically challenging the report's refusal to disclose redacted copies of that 28-page report. My understanding is that, given the ruling that the court made, is that the person who actually made the request, filed the suit, was not successful in having that page or that redacted report released. But I would think it would be incumbent upon us to insist that it is released so that we have a, you know, greater understanding of what's going on.
So Councilmember Oxger, just so you know, we're just, we're going to initially honor your request, and I think once they have that forward, then we can discuss that matter?
Okay.
Okay.
When is our response due? City manager?
That's, it's, well, we know that it continues to be delayed. But there would be a.
I'm just wondering if we can afford the presentation on this report with reasonable amount of time before our response is due.
Right, so there's no deadline right now for timeframes to respond. If there is a NEPA process, then there will be a SEPA process. And also, just to remind everyone, that we've got at least four individual cities that will comment, but also the planning managers for those cities are working with consultants so we come up with a regional response to those impacts and file that against both NEPA, but I think the primary consideration is SEPA, and we think that the airport has moved forward with a few of the near-term projects that SEPA is designed to look at cumulative impacts. So we're concerned that there's a gap there and possibly this report like this could be part of our response.
Councilmember Steinmetz, your point is noted. What we'll do is we'll turn it over to staff, they'll look at it, how it can fit into the future's agenda, taking into consideration what might be most beneficial for our city and some of the other things we're trying to achieve. Are there any other new items? Seeing none, we'll go on to board and committee reports. And we'll start with Mr. J.C. Harris. Mr. Nutting was going to read the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, so with him being absent, we'll just start there.
Coincidentally, next week I will be in Olympia advocating for some changes to some aviation legislation, one in particular, HB 1791. All of the attempts to cite a second airport have met with failure since basically for decades. And what I would like lawmakers to consider is that the reason none of these proposals ever provide any kind of updated relief for the 900-pound elephant in the room, meaning us, Sea-Tac Airport Residents. It's very difficult to get somebody in another county to be on board with a second airport when they see how poorly treated we are. And so my thought would be that any multi-hundred-million-dollar project to cite a second airport should also include some ongoing structural revenue to compensate the city of Des Moines, amongst others, for the impacts. I think it's an easier sale on a second airport if residents there can see that life is at least marginally getting better for us. We should be compensated. We always should have been compensated. I also want to commend the city for reconstituting the Citizens Advisory Committee, but I would, and I'll just say to the people who, hopefully the people who would apply are the people who watch city council meetings, and I would just suggest to them that this is not a substitute for the public engagement that the city deserves. We've hired a communications consultant, we hired one in 2017, we also had one in 2013 and 2011, and they always come back with the same recommendations. The Citizens Advisory Committee is not a substitute for a better website, better outreach, better community meetings. It would not have made for a better Marina Bulkhead. outreach, better community meetings, it would not have made for a better Marina Bulkhead opening. It's great to have a forum to talk to the city, but you also want a city that is more amenable to listening and recognizes the, uh, broader communication changes that, uh, are what people, I think, are truly asking for. And, uh, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Moving on to Councilmember Pennington.
Yeah, thank you all for coming this evening, thanks for those that shared, um, and, um, I don't really have a whole lot to report on. I attended a, a meeting at, at, with the rest of the council this evening, um, out at our police substation that, that Chief Thomas, uh, gave us the, the tour and, and gave us some insight on, on the operations of it and, and the history. So thank you, uh, for that. So anyway, that's, uh, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Pennington. Moving on to Councilmember Steinmetz.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, last night I attended the, um, South Sound, uh, or the, uh, Sound Cities Association Public Interest Committee meeting, uh, and, uh, I've already talked a little bit about the Housing Solutions Group, uh, that they, is out there trying to find the missing middle by, uh, essentially getting rid of single-family homes, uh, as an exclusive neighborhood, uh, and allowing other types of, uh, buildings to be built in there, multi-unit buildings. So, uh, we also got an update on the King County Regional Homeless Authority, which is putting together a five-year plan, and this is just really a huge entity, uh, that is trying to, um, coordinate all the housing, um, or homelessness issues that are going on in King County. And it's a little frustrating, it's, it's, uh, a lot of the county trying to put, you know, something, an umbrella over everything that local jurisdictions are doing. But nonetheless, it keeps moving forward. There was some progress that has been made by the, um, Sound Cities Association in sort of negotiating with them, but, uh, some other things, for example, trying to get approval for regional projects, uh, to, uh, come through the Sound Cities Association, uh, apparently has been rejected, but it's still an ongoing discussion. And then lastly, we had a legislative update, uh, from the Washington Cities Association, uh, talked about many of the bills, uh, that are currently, um, that survive cutoff. And I don't know if you know what cutoff is, but in the legislature, they have a cutoff point, which is sometimes called the halftime, uh, because it's basically halfway through, and bills in the House of, in, in the House of Origin, so if they originated in the Senate or the House, have to be passed by cutoff. And if they're not, they're dead. They won't be seen again. But a lot of those bills have companion bills that were in the other House, House or Senate, uh, that may still be alive, and so then there's a lot of back and forth. Uh, but it's a winnowing down process, uh, that the legislature uses to get to that final product that they're actually going to pass. And, um, the, uh, looks like right now, uh, some of the highlights from that, uh, the Blakely Fix, uh, which is the, uh, elimination of, uh, our current straight drug possession laws, um, and the fix for that is, uh, appears to, what's passing at this point is going, it's, simple possession of most drugs is going to be a gross misdemeanor, um, with a treatment focus, uh, and then more specific punishments for those that don't take advantage of the treatment options, uh, that are available to them. That's what it looks like, at least now, after the cutoff. There is, um, as the city manager talked about, the Pursuits Bill, um, is coming out. The Senate, uh, passed their bill, um, by an unusual move of just pulling it straight to the floor and passing it out. Um, and it was passed out with bipartisan support. So, uh, it looks like that may be moving, but now that goes to the House, which wasn't even able to get their Pursuits Bill out of committee, and so we don't know what's going to happen, uh, in there. But those were a couple of the things that really kind of caught my eye that I wanted to share with people. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Steinmetz.
I guess I've done, I had a good time at Redondo.
Yes.
Uh, the substation is great.
Great, thank you. Uh, moving on to Councilmember Oxger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to acknowledge, uh, some of the great work that, uh, volunteer groups do in the city, and one of the, uh, ones that's really significant every year is the cleanup of the downtown area. Destination Des Moines is hosting a cleanup, uh, this Saturday from 11:00 AM to 11:30, and they're asking people that are interested in helping to meet up at, uh, Big Catch Plaza. So, uh, I hope everybody can make it out there and clean up downtown. That's all.
Deputy Mayor Buxton?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, an unusual, was it 11 to 11:30 or 10:00 AM to 11:30?
10:00.
Okay, I just want to clarify that. Thank you, Mayor. Don't have much of a report tonight, other than I appreciated being able to meet with a handful of other deputy mayors around King County. We meet, uh, once a, once a month, and the discussion just hovered around one issue today amongst all the cities. Um, it was the challenge of working together with civility and finding common ground. And so it, it's not, we are not the only city that is challenged with some of that, every single city in the meeting today. I appreciated the, a summary statement by our director. This is a, a meeting that's hosted by Sound Cities, which is the same organization that hosts the Public Issues Committee that, uh, Councilmember Steinmetz goes, uh, we, our director, David Hoffman, he's a pretty, pretty amazing guy, and he talked about the importance that really, in all the organizations he's been involved with, building relationship and connection really is more essential than the type of government that we choose, whether we're a council manager or strong mayor, form of government, or, you know, a pile of rules, more and more rules, more and more rules, will never fix problematic character or whatever drives people to behave in certain manners or not. We all need to make decisions to learn how to connect and find common ground. And it was a challenging conversation today, but, uh, challenging for me personally, as well as all of us at the table, and, uh, to look to ourselves to find common ground and build relationship. So, personal challenge, I'm going to even work harder at that. So that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Buxton. As I begin, um, Councilmember Harris, I must caution you, since you're under censure, that if you are going to go to the state capitol, that you're fully aware, fully allowed to represent yourself, but not the council or the city. With that, um, the ribbon cutting down at the north parking lot was a great event. Um, obviously, we're looking to do something else, uh, but what was really great was we were able to recognize a lot of the city staff. Michael, you and your team did a wonderful job, and some of the contractors for that project. It was cold and, like, nearly bitter cold. So hopefully, when we do the next event, uh, and are able to have our legislators there, it'll be a little warmer and more pleasant. Also, um, the, uh, Bejavrim Synagogue asked me to come on Friday night, last Friday night. I apologize to the city and them that I pronounced it, uh, I slaughtered it actually, um, but that's, that's the correct pronunciation. I was able to read the proclamation to the folks at the synagogue, and I just have to say, Council, you would have been very touched by how, um, they felt about it. I learned some things, I attended the synagogue, uh, service, and it was eye-opening to, um, how persecuted people feel and how, when they're recognized, how they appreciate it greatly. With that, um, the next meeting will be April 6th of 2023 for a city council study session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
移到
And I have a second, all those in favor? Motion passes six zero. With that, everybody have a nice evening and a better weekend.